Please take your seats.
Еще раз добрый день.
Once again, good morning. I'm very glad to welcome here, to greet all the participants, all those who have come to this session. We know each other. There are some... Those who don't know me, I am Margim Artum, Projector at GEMO and Executive Director of Riza. So, but I think that we've got acquainted. Our session was to be opened by Mr. Turkunov, but unfortunately, in these times of the pandemic, we need to be very cautious. And he just had come down with a flu and he has made tests and the results are not rather ambiguous, so he has to stay home. That's why I'll be the one who will open this session. When we thought about how to formulate the session, we believed that we have a great variety of friends and partners in the countries of Central Asia. These are our close neighbors who are in direct dependence from the situation in Afghanistan. And they depend on it very much. And they follow, observe the events taking place there. These countries have a very good experience and expertise in terms of the Afghan experience. They have accumulated this experience for more than many decades. It started with the Soviet diplomacy. They... And now they have their own diplomacy. The Soviet diplomats were mainly from the Central Asia. And now they work in the research centers of these countries. And they have really a very good experience and have been following the development of the situation in Afghanistan. Many have been doing it since the early 80s. And they are very actively involved in the process. They go to Afghanistan on a regular basis. And they follow the situation onsite. And these are real experts and they will take floor at this session. And they will describe their views on the situation. So we wanted to make this session panoramic. And that's why we invited representatives from the military. And they will give their own experience, expertise and their views on the situation in Afghanistan. We also invited representatives of the countries neighboring Afghanistan from the other side, from our northern neighbors. And they responded to our invitation, accepted it, from our colleagues from Pakistan, India. As you know, we have a hybrid format and they will participate in this session online. So the first speaker, speakers will be our colleagues from the Euro-Atlantic space. They may listen to our discussions, may comment on it. Then we'll have a second part. And we're very glad to see that students take part, are taking part in our discussion. Because they will be our future specialists and experts. And they will study the problems and deal with this region. So the second part of our session will be an expert panel discussion. And there, only specialists will talk, only experts will give their views without students. So today, we have those people, researchers, diplomats, who have been always involved with the history of Afghanistan. For example, Special Representatives of Afghanistan, Mr. Brahimy, he will talk online. And as famous as and as important and professional, who has been dealing with Afghanistan all his life, the Zabir Kabulov, Representative of the President. So I give you the floor. And you'll be the moderator of this session, as well as Ivanso Frankchuk, the Director of the Center for Eurasian Studies. And co-moderator would be Ulugova Kuzmina, Hilola Shavkaturna. She is a GEMO researcher and teacher. And she is from Uzbekistan. And she is a symbol of the transparency of relations between Russia and Uzbekistan and close relations. So, Zabir, Mr. Kabulov, the floor is yours. Special Representatives of Russia's President of Afghanistan. Thank you very much. For me, as a graduate of GEMO, is a great joy to be here. And to discuss the topic which is of great concern for me, both in terms of my beauty, on my duties and emotionally. I'm very glad to see my gold, my old good friends, Mr. Brahimy. I worked with him in a special mission of Afghanistan. My great friend, Rahis Sood, he was ambassador in Kabul, Representative of India. And many other colleagues. I know all the opinions. And I know that their opinions are of great importance for our discussion. Also, we have here representatives of the research community. You know, I'm an applied researcher and applied diplomat. And for me, it's very important and interesting to listen to the opinions of the representatives of more fundamental researchers. Because your opinions will help to take balanced political decisions. I am absolutely sure, certain that you write a lot of research studies dealing with the inherent reasons or causes for this tragedy in Afghanistan. And you'll make adequate conclusions. And I, as an applied diplomat, I'm more on the practice side. And I'm sure that we'll hear the evaluations why the regime change has taken place in Afghanistan. I'm very interested to follow the day-to-day operations. And to pursue current policies of Russia that should be successful, both for Russia and Afghanistan and for the, for our good neighbors. We have friendly relations with them and we have common interests. And now, together, we are dealing with these problems, trying to develop common approaches and find common solutions. I was a witness of Taliban's coming to power for the first time. As you know, they were established in 1994. And they took Kabul by force in 1995. And I went to Afghanistan a couple of weeks ago. I talked with the representatives of the transitional or interim government of Afghanistan. And I had an opportunity to compare the situation of the 90s and the current situation. Of course, the world community is very much dissatisfied and concerned about what's going on in Afghanistan. Everybody is, has these feelings. But please believe me that the situation is much better than it used to be in the 90s. Of course, it's not ideal. But we have to remember that we have our cultural values and other values we have to stick to. And any other country has to cherish and to stick to their own values. But we cannot impose our values on others. I don't like many things done by the Taliban. For example, they are not very appropriate or adequate in trying to giving responses to the most sensitive issues posed by the world community. The most important topic is special negative situation with women. And of course, it's, it's true, it's true to life. But on the other hand, I'd call on all of you, practitioners, diplomats and researchers, to be more, to be more calm and tranquil in analyzing the facts. There were some bad things happening in Afghanistan. And there were protest rallies in Afghanistan. Women took to the streets and they showed that they are much more courageous than the Afghani men. But at the same time, only about 3,000 women took part in these demonstrations in Kabul. While there are 6 million of residents in Kabul. And 80% of the Afghani population lives in, in the rural areas. So this time, the Taliban is trying to be more civilized. But we don't know what's going on in the rural areas. Though there is a communication, mobile communication. And Afghans are very amicable, communicative. And if there were some troubles and problems, I'm sure that they will tell it the whole world about it. And also, I watched TV channels. And I saw that the television is functioning. Those channels that functioned under the previous regime, they continue their operations. So I was really rather surprised. But they tried to show a balanced approach and balanced information. And they are rather unbiased and impartial. And they also show the points of view of those who are opposed to the Taliban authorities. You even could not imagine this happening in the 90s. Well, you may argue that it's a good thing, but it's not enough. And you would be right. So we have somehow to work out a very friendly attitude towards Afghanistan. And to give some friendly advice to the new leaders of Afghanistan. Taking into account not only the opinions of the world community, but also the sentiments in the Afghan society. So what's going on in Afghanistan? Even if we take into account the history, what was going on before. I would have to, you know, in the past, the Taliban would be compared to a national liberation movement with the religious persuasion. And also, it's a classical fight between the urban and rural areas. Also, we have to take into account that the new authorities of Afghanistan do not represent homogeneous... They're not homogeneous. And they're trying to build a common strategy inside the country in terms of domestic and foreign policies. There are some contradictions, rivalries inside the authorities. And it's not clear how it will be developed. They're just trying to build, to develop a common ground and a common approach that would help to strengthen their power. And of course, it's quite natural that the, any power, any authority tries to boost itself, to pop it up. At present, they are trying to establish ties with the international community. And it's a very important point. And I drew attention to this fact while I talked to my colleagues from China, Afghanistan, Pakistan and India. So this period, it was started with the victory. Then it was euphoria caused by this victory. And now, all this is replaced by a feeling of responsibility. Many things have to be tackled just bypassing. And they do not have the managerial skills. And they are quite open about it. They say that it's much more easier to fight with arms than to govern the country. So if we like it or don't like it, it doesn't matter. But we need to be sincere and to act in the interest of the whole Afghani people. And we have to build up relations with Afghanistan. And we need to develop a constructive approach. And the whole international community has to develop this common ground and approach. And to tell the Taliban what changes should be introduced in Afghanistan. And of course, we cannot demand that the Taliban stick to the international or European human rights standards. It would be a hypocrisy.
When I'm talking to my colleagues from Europe and to the US, but not so much, you know, when I'm talking about human rights. But anyway, the colleagues are mostly interested to not get a flow of refugees from Afghanistan. And so, I'm trying to always call for common sense. If you want to avoid a flow of refugees, then let's do our best in order to ensure that the poor Afghans who for different reasons have to leave and want to leave the country are not persecuted. We need to ensure that. There are some categories that are being persecuted. However, many people from Afghanistan would like to leave the country for economic reasons. For them, it's a matter of survival. They want to go to Europe or to other countries with a higher living standard. So if our European colleagues would want to prevent the refugees from coming to Europe, they need to do their best in order to create economic conditions in Afghanistan that would facilitate the situation when the majority of Afghans would stay in their home country. In any case, we need to understand that people in Afghanistan, they love their homeland and they love their home. It's always more comfortable to stay in your own country as long as you have favorable economic conditions. And that would be a big thing and that would be a real contribution. And not, these do not just need to be words. When we're talking about human rights, one of them is a right to a decent life. And that's what we need to think about. This is one of the basic values in general. This is where we proceed from. And we are planning to hold another meeting in Moscow. This is going to be what we call the extended trio. That would be Russia, the United States, China and Pakistan. And in this meeting, we're going to try to work out a common position towards the changing situation in Afghanistan. Next week, we're going to have an extended meeting that's called the Meeting in the Moscow format. And we will have 11 participating states, including a delegation from Kabul. And they have already decided that they will participate. We just don't know who exactly. And we're also going to have a closed-door meeting on the 20th of October with the leaders of Afghanistan. And we're going to discuss how the region will deal with the situation. And I mentioned that there will be some more countries in the extended format, including India, Iran, Pakistan. And all together, we're going to discuss with the delegation from Afghanistan about our concerns. But we're not going to phrase these concerns as our demands or requirements. We're just going to discuss how we could constructively start solving the problems. We do not expect any breakthroughs. This is a long process. This is an evolution, so to say. We'll obviously discuss all the issues of human rights. But we're also going to discuss the humanitarian situation in Afghanistan. And we're going to try to find solutions. And for Russia, there are two priorities in Afghanistan. We need to think of drug trafficking and terrorism. And these are priority areas, not only for Russia, but for other countries as well. Here, we share the position, you know, we're on a similar side of the history as our American colleagues say. At the same time, we expect the new authorities of Afghanistan to reaffirm their commitments on not letting to use Afghanistan against the interests and security of not only the neighboring countries, but in general, other countries of the world. These are obligatory commitments when we're talking about Afghanistan. And I'm talking about the former leaders and these leaders as well. And one practical question that we're going to discuss with our partners in this region is also the need for a broader international participation of post-conflict settlement in Afghanistan. This process needs to be headed by the United Nations. These are basically the most important tasks of the United Nations. And we believe that this meeting, that will include the representatives of the current Afghan government, will call for the United Nations to act. And this would also be a reason for the provisional government to create a permanent government and to make it more inclusive, more balanced. And most importantly, it would be independent, peaceful and neutral. And we hope that it will govern in the country in harmony. And Afghanistan will be free from drug trafficking and crime. I'm going to stop here. There are many other participants who would like to make their contribution. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Kabulov, for such a detailed perspective of Afghanistan. And I would like to say once again that in the modern world, the regional vision when it comes to Afghanistan is growing. And obviously, the international community needs to be involved through the United Nations. And it should be a priority. But still, when there was external nation building, this experiment failed. This experiment is over. And Afghanistan cannot be isolated and look inward. But at the same time, it cannot connect with the foreign centers immediately. It needs to find its place in the international system. Here, we have the representatives of almost all countries of Central Asia. And the representatives of Pakistan and India and Iran. And obviously, Central Asia already has many institutions. And they deal with the issues of security and the economy. That's why the Central Asian view is becoming more significant. It has always been significant, but now its significance is growing even further. And this is why I'm happy to give the floor to the Director of the Third Department of the CIS Countries of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Russian Federation, Mr. Sternikov, Sternik, Mr. Alexander Sternik. The floor is yours. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me here and to take part in this important discussion. I believe that we are very lucky. Because there are such distinguished participants as Mr. Kabulov. They're world-renowned experts that always contribute greatly to such events. As for the influence of Afghanistan to security, we're going to talk about the influence of Afghanistan on the security. Because I believe that this is a space of single security. And I believe that our partners and I share this vision. In the latest years and in several centuries, we formed very common attitudes to this country. And today, we share this vision. And there was a joint statement of the Central Asian Five and Russia during the June Conference in Tashkent. And this common vision is especially necessary when Afghanistan has a new twist in their history. When we discuss Afghanistan, our partners and I hope for the best, but expect the worst. We are always prepared to act. And that's why we are now more proactive when it comes to security. The collective security treaty organization is mobilizing its resources. And we're also trying to build up opportunities through such organizations as the COO and the CIS. And we also have the Council of Defense Ministers and other organizations that are aimed at working out a common policy of the CIS towards Afghanistan. We have conducted military exercise. And we have discussed about how we can react to radical forces that are now active in Asia with the participation of Uzbekistan, Tajikistan and Russia. And we're going to continue joint exercises as long as we need. And as long as the situation... and as long as uh, the situation in neighboring countries is concerning. For Russia, it's important not to let chaos and the lack of government that would lead to a humanitarian crisis and a collapse. This would displace many people and force many people to leave their homes. And that would lead to a flow of refugees and among whom there could be uh, radical extremists. These days, uh, the Taliban loses their anti-terrorist potential. And this is demonstrated by a range of terrorist attacks in the country. Uh, ISIS, which is forbidden in the Russian Federation, takes responsibility for these terrorist attacks. And uh, the movement of uh, other movements also take responsibilities for such terrorist attacks. And we know that the influence of such organizations go far beyond Afghanistan. Some of them are active not only in Central Asia, but uh, they uh, could become active even in Russia. So it's a security challenge for us. Drug trafficking is also on the rise. People in Afghanistan lack money and that's why they have to use illegal methods of income. Iran and India are already victims of drug trafficking. And this could also become a threat for Central Asia and Russia. So when we're talking about Afghanistan, uh, we care deeply about our own security and the security of our neighbors. Central Asia uh, in general, it has historically close ties with Russia and five million Russian compatriots who live there. Central Asia uh, also is an area of Russia's economic interest. And I believe that when we're talking about Afghanistan, we're talking about uh, the countries of the CIS and their security and consequently, our security. It's hard to tell how long uh, we will face these risks from Afghanistan. But now, obviously, uh, we need to protect Central Asia. Afghanistan is partly stuck in the Middle Ages while the Central Asian countries are developing quickly and they supply regional security. And therefore, uh, it is logical that we're very concerned about a faster integration of Afghanistan in the regional cooperation. And the concept of Big Central Asia is even more far-fetched. When we're talking about the Common Transit Corridor, I mean uh, it's a corridor between Afghanistan, Pakistan and other countries. The UN and the local law enforcement agencies say that if, when the goods turnout grew, uh, drug trafficking also grew, uh, including drug trafficking through official customs checkpoints. And now uh, many problems that this region has can become our problems. The United States is trying to include Central Asia in um, fighting uh, different groups within the country. And now they're calling for a quicker recovery. And obviously, this process will be controlled through funding of joint projects. And we need to pay special attention um, to um, military mediators and those who helped the American forces during the twenty years. Now, some of our allies uh, are being under pressure. And they are doing other activities uh, under the cover of anti-terrorism anti-terrorism fighting. Some people hide behind Central Asians. And uh, this way, Washington uh, can uh, make them a victim of other forces. And this is what Tajikistan is being threatened with right now. And not only anti-American radicalists, but other groups uh, can also infiltrate the region. And then uh, there will be separatists and Uyghurs or Belushi in Iran and Pakistan. The risks from international foreign military bases uh, definitely outweigh uh, all the benefits. And there are many major projects that need to be done when it comes to infrastructure, uh, to uh, gas streams and so on and so forth. And after the Americans left, they left a lot of weapons behind. I'm sorry, I probably took a lot of your time. I would like to sum it up and I would like to tell you that uh, our priorities are facilitating uh, the dialogue in Afghanistan without uh, uh, discriminating any ethnic groups, getting security guarantees for our borders and getting the proof that they are fighting radical extremists. We know what we're talking about. This is Ansarallah, the Islamic Movement of uh, Jihad and other organizations. It's important not to postpone international humanitarian aid. Especially when it comes to organizations that still have a good reputation. I'm talking about the UN and specialized agencies because other uh, ways to deliver aid might not turn out to be that efficient. The US is not in a hurry to defreeze the national assets of the Bank of Afghanistan, which can worsen the humanitarian situation. And we know that in winter, when it's cold, um, terrorist organizations tend to grow. And we need to not let uh, organizations like Spirit of America, ABT Associates and TM uh, C to come to the region. And Palladium Group is also a concerning player. We need to confront the pressure together. And we also understand that people who temporarily leave Afghanistan can uh, leave permanently. And thousands of Afghani people who are now in transition to other countries, they do not have the right to either American visas or other visas. And uh, we can make a comparison to Iraqi citizens who have been waiting to get their special immigration visas since two thousand and fourteen. We understand that the main job of the West is now to not let uh, the Afghan refugees come.
But it's very close to our borders and we need to be more responsible and cautious and to be on the alert. So today, we need to come together with our partners and neighbors and to protect our common interests. Thank you for your attention. Alexander, thank you very much for your talk. You just draw, have drawn attention to sensitive areas and showed that it would be rather difficult to include Afghanistan in the regional mechanisms of interaction because the legal mechanisms are becoming shadowy and we cannot uh, do anything about it. We can have such examples as in the Balkans, a traffic of humans, um, capitals uh, where both legal and illicit shadowy. We, together with our Central Asian colleagues, discuss that we, what kind of border has to be erected with Afghanistan? And what to do with this civilizational element that was included into this border? As these countries are at an absolutely different, different level of development. And this border has to have many dimensions, both civilizational, economic and uh, border security protection. Today, uh, in our program, we have the representative of the Aerospace Forces of the Russian Federation. And they are present here today. Their point of view is very important for our work. But we'll listen to this representative later. Now I give floor to the Special Representative Ambassador Brahimi. Uh, for me, it's a great honor to introduce you here at our Moscow event. So I'd like to draw attention of our audience that you uh, were a special representative of the secret, of the UN Secretary General under the first Taliban's ascension to power. So your point of view is especially important and interesting because you worked together with Mr. Kabulov. And maybe your experience uh, in dealing with Taliban was negative at that time. But still, maybe we can take into account some uh, practices, some experience you have accumulated. And because we have to somehow deal with the uh, international community and to show them how to work with Afghanistan. So your practical experience and expertise is very important. And we hope that you give some very uh, interesting and valuable comments. So the floor is your, Mr. Ambassador, Your Excellency.
Um, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. I hope that my coming to you correctly. Uh, Mr. President, I am very deeply grateful to Director Torunov for inviting me to this conference. And I wish him from great recovery from flu. May I be allowed to greet Ambassador Zami Kabulov with a special word? I remember with great fondness our time together frustrations in Kabul in the late nineteen nineties and the early ninety, two thousands. Uh, but I see that uh, probably due to his name, Kabulov, he is kind of destined to be working on Afghanistan forever. But he is a huge asset for Russia. And I believe for the rest of the world that he will continue with success in his service for Russia and for Afghanistan. Uh, I am very disappointed that my present personal circumstances did not allow me to join you in person in Moscow. But I am truly honored to be able to participate from a distance, thanks to the miracle of the internet. I have listened with keen interest to the speakers who have gone before me. And I learned much from them and in particular, I encouraged uh, from what Zameer has said about future meetings that are being contemplated in Moscow for the next few days. Uh, whatever experience I have had and knowledge I may have had, they are dated. In the past twenty years, I visited Afghanistan only once, in two thousand and ten and for only two nights. Consequently, I'm fully aware that what I have to say cannot rise to the level of what I can learn myself from all the other participants. I'll make only, again, also due to time, I'll make only three points about or around following three very simple questions that everyone is familiar with. One, the international community nor Afghanistan at its end. Two, the Taliban have won and are best but they cannot consult power if they ignore the tremendous changes which have taken place in Afghanistan during the past twenty years. And three, it is high that the neighbors of Afghanistan and what I call the near neighbors of Afghanistan get together and sincerely agree that peace of Afghanistan is in the collective and they will gather to support a genuine Afghan plan for lasting peace in Afghanistan. One, I remember telling the Security Council in September nineteen ninety-nine that it was wrong to neglect Afghanistan and that conflict in Afghanistan will not be kept forever within Afghanistan's borders. In fact, consequences of that conflict were already then strongly felt outside of the country through the millions of refugees, drug trafficking and millions of drug addicts near and far from Afghanistan's border. And on eleventh of Sept-September two thousand and one, the Afghan conflict literally blew up in the face of the entire world. And then nine eleven immediately boom run the conflict back into Afghanistan itself. Looking at the various meetings taking place around the globe, from the Security Council to the G twenty, two meetings in Qatar to your conference today and official encounters Zameer has just spoken about in Moscow in the near future. One has the impression that the international community has learned that lesson. Uh, but are we really certain that the lesson has been truly learned? I, for one, will be convinced of that only when I see that the various actors are addressing the issues together, not separately or in small cluster, two or three or whatever number. The Security Council is not united. The G twenty is for all practical purposes, mainly Western group. And the neighbors of Afghanistan have not yet come together in any meaningful way. Second, the Taliban have reestablished their Islamic ally. They clearly are proud of their victory for their opponent, both Afghan and Taliban. They have total authority over Afghanistan lands today. And if I assume their name responsibility for atrocious acts of terrorism, I do not blame them as an attempt authority of Afghanistan, at least not yet. In other words, the Taliban have won the war. But have they won the peace or are they going to win the war? Twenty years ago, the opponents Taliban had won what looked like a similarly impressive like victory. And for a time, there was no fighting anywhere in Afghanistan. True, military victory was achieved by a mighty foreign coalition, not by the Afghan opponents of the Taliban. Nevertheless, with continued strong international support, a new promising dispensation was slowly put together in place of the routed Taliban establishment. But in two thousand and one and two thousand and two, when the first steps to put that new dispensation were taken, a very simple question was not asked. The Taliban establishment has been routed and the Taliban were not to be seen anywhere anymore in the main cities of Afghanistan. But where have they gone? Thousands were killed and thousands were arrested, but there were counted in hundreds of thousands. Where have they gone and what are they counting? I have recently learned that something of their leader actually wrote President Karzai offering to accept their defeat and the new regime if they were allowed to, with their religion, in peace and in unity. I hear, were not given that. I further hear that President Karzai recently, he received no message of it. Be that as it may. When the question about the Taliban was timidly asked by some in 2001 and 2002, the unanimous answer one got from the victorious Northern Alliance and all the main international actors was forget about the Taliban. They have been defeated. They do not exist anymore. Today, the Taliban speak in almost similar words. They speak of their victory as being the victory of the Antarctic, Afghanistan, and Cold War. In other words, they, the Taliban, have achieved that victory with the support of everyone in the country and on their behalf. And Afghan opponents to their rule simply do not exist. Indeed, they never existed. Their only opponents were the foreign invaders and those foreigners have been defeated and they are gone. The lesson there is simple and clear. Yes, the Taliban enjoy much support and it is very likely that that support will grow for a time. But opposition to their ideology and their rule is very substantial in the country and outside of the country. And in the not too distant future, opposition to their ideology and rule will grow. Friends of Taliban would not take attitude similar to those taken by the friends of the enemies of the Taliban 20 years ago. They should on the contrary, strong Taliban to reach out to their opponents of yesterday and even more importantly, that they should encourage them to understand and accept that the country needs that rule in the future is hugely different from the country they ruled during the five or six years of the last century. If they want to be there much longer this time around, they have to genuinely share power with others and accept that a large part of the Afghan society do not accept many of the benefits of their ideology. Three, and last, my third point is about the neighbors and those I call the near neighbors. From 1997 to 2003, I dealt with more but not all of those groups that I have referred to the name of the six plus two, which I'm sure Zameer remembers. We were not able to include India in that group, unfortunately. If a new similar group is considered, it should definitely include India but also Turkey, Qatar and Saudi Arabia. Through such former or modern group or other group, it is indispensable that these countries come together and agree on a binding agreement that peace and stability in Afghanistan, not war and mobility and is the effective national difference and in the interest of regional peace and cooperation. Mr. President, half an hour ago, I heard that a devastating terrorist attack on a mosque in Tandahar resulted in the loss of many lives, much material damage. Is more of that needed to remind Taliban and the world in the region and in the world that now that lasting peace is not there yet in Afghanistan? The Taliban have an opportunity to play a major role, no, the major role in a last establishing lasting peace in their country. The neighbors, the near neighbors, have had 40 years to understand that peace in Afghanistan, not war, is in their individual and collective interest. And the rest of the world do not need more refugees and more drugs out of Afghanistan and another 9/11 somewhere to understand that they need to work together to help the people of Afghanistan achieve the real peace they deserve, which has eluded them for close to half century. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Господин посол Брахими, если...
Thank you very much. If you missed a part of your, part of our reaction, I would like to inform you that there was a round of applause after your speech. So thank you very much. Now I give the floor to Central Asia and the two countries who are very active in the current crisis. This is Uzbekistan and Tajikistan. And now I'd like to give the floor to the Director of the Information and Analytical Center for International Relations of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Uzbekistan, Ambassador Extraordinary and Plenipotentiary, Mr. Daniel Kurbanov. Thank you very much. First, let me express my gratitude to the organizers for inviting me to take part in the 13th convention and to give my address at the special session on Afghanistan with such a representative audience. Afghanistan takes a special place in the foreign policy, diplomacy and the expert discourse of Afghanistan. In the last 40 years, the Afghan conflict has been the most important problem when it comes to securing the security and development of the region in general. Afghan settlement is our priority and the security of Afghanistan is the security of Uzbekistan and the basis for prosperity for the whole Central Asia. In the last five years, there was a major change when it comes to our attitude to the Afghan problem. Tashkent does not view Afghanistan only as a threat. And now we understand and we're certain that peace and stability in Afghanistan will open to Uzbekistan and other countries of Central Asia and the whole continent, a new opportunities for development. Another thing is that we're thinking of Afghanistan as an integral part of Central Asia. And Tashkent's diplomacy towards Afghanistan is a continuation of our new regional policy that is dedicated to improving relations with the countries, a mutually beneficial cooperation, development of regional cooperation in general. Afghanistan is one of the vectors of Central Asia when it comes to regional and interregional questions. The countries of the region supported the idea to hold an international conference of high level on Afghanistan and Tashkent in 2018. And the regional consensus on supporting the peace settlement and the involvement of the country into the humanitarian and economic development was registered in the joint statement of the heads of state after their consultations in Tashkent. Another key dimension of our Afghanistan politics is involving the country, involving our country into the settlement together with our regional partners on cooperation with Afghanistan and in the framework of different platforms and mechanism such as the Moscow format, the International Contact Group, the Istanbul Project, it's called the Heart of Asia, the SCO Contact Group and the Dialogue Platforms of Central Asia applies with Japan, Korea and the European Union, the US, India, Russia and China. I named the countries in the order of establishment to the formats. An important thing is also diplomatic contacts with Taliban that are aimed at facilitating the peaceful process and the national reconciliation. The dialogue with the political office of Taliban in Qatar, Uzbekistan and other platforms that happened with the knowledge of the Islamic Republic helped us to develop understanding and to develop the relations with the current leaders. Nowadays, Uzbekistan shares the concern in the region and the concern of the world community in general when it comes to what's going on in Afghanistan. There are negative consequences in case the scenario of 1990 will repeat. And I mean a civil war, humanitarian crisis, an international isolation and turning the country into the cradle of terrorism. The situation in Afghanistan will probably remain tense for a while, especially because there are terrorist groups there right now. And in such conditions, it's important to prevent the growth of extremism and terrorism and using the country by terrorist groups in order to undermine the neighboring countries. That's why we're taking counterterrorism measures, including joint exercises with Russia and with our partners in Central Asia and other countries, including in the framework of the Shanghai Cooperation Organization within the CIS and also the SCO with the Collective Security Treaty Organization. The President of Uzbekistan suggested using the SCO, CSTO contacts and have a working group. Instability and tension is growing because of the transition of power in Afghanistan and we need to strengthen our counterterrorism potential and we need to interact. In November, Tashkent plans to host a major international meeting dedicated to the 10-year anniversary of Central Asian Plan of Action within the framework of the global anti-terrorist strategy of the UN. It is clear that this forum will allow us a good platform to discuss how we can counterterrorism and other security threats, including those that are related to Afghanistan. At the same time, the experience that we now have of a very uniting agenda, realizing our position towards Afghanistan and our cooperation with other states in the region can help us decrease tension, mostly through preventive diplomacy, including bilateral and multilateral direct contact and working with the Taliban when it comes to the most important issues. Uzbekistan has already started this work and now they're working with the new Afghan government, which is necessary to solve certain problems like providing humanitarian aid, supplying food, oil and electricity. Tashkent has welcomed the transition government. On the 7th of October, an official delegation headed by the Minister of Foreign Affairs, Mr. Kamilov, held talks with the leadership of the country. And they discussed providing aid and economic cooperation, including infrastructure projects. And these arrangements had been reached with the Islamic Republic previously. Uzbekistan supports an inclusive government in Afghanistan because it might be an important precondition for stabilizing the situation in the country. At the same time, we believe that this should not be an obstacle for cooperation of the world community and Afghanistan. And we should not aim against stabilizing the humanitarian situation. That's why we need to solve the problem of the freezing of assets of Afghan banks abroad. We also need to involve Afghanistan in the regional relations. Uzbekistan has done a lot for developing transport infrastructure that is used for supplying humanitarian aid and such countries as Pakistan and Iran are involved as well. We're now discussing building a new railroad. And because of a crisis with human resources in the country, we can use our education centers where Afghani youth could learn new professions. We are also sure that the events in Afghanistan would not prevent promoting the projects that we talked about in our July conference in Tashkent and talking about the initiatives of connecting Central and South Asia. Stabilization challenges, including countering terrorism and radicalization, will allow us to strengthen the cooperation of both countries. And the efforts of both Central Asian and South Asian states of involving Afghanistan in the different infrastructure projects and economic projects will help us form a long-term mechanism of cooperation of the two regions. Overall, the solution of the problems in Afghanistan can be reached through improving contacts with the new government, providing humanitarian aid as soon as possible and building our relations based on mutual interest and compromise. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Kurbanov. I would like to ask the speakers to stick to the time limit. We have a 10-minute time limit. And now I would like to give the floor to the Director of the Academy of Public Administration under the President of the Republic of Tajikistan, Abdulha-Abdulhalil Gaforsoda. And then Mr. Sood is going to take the floor.
Thank you very much. Distinguished colleagues and participants. There have been many experienced diplomats speaking here today. And so it's hard for me to add something, but when it comes to legal issues, I would also like to give some comments. From the first days, our country tried to settle conflicts in Afghanistan. And our president and the leadership on behalf of the whole nation stress the importance of stability and peace in the neighboring country of Afghanistan. They say that we need it like people need air. And that's why we are offering continuous efforts. And we are trying to provide not only the security of our country but also the security of the whole region. And this is a shield against drug trafficking, terrorism, extremism and illegal migration. War and armed conflict and clashes lead to innocent victims. Such events lead to poverty and economic collapse. They destroy all the legal frameworks. And these are the ordinary people that suffer and these are the innocent that find themselves victims. Now there is a transition period in Afghanistan. And nowadays, there is a threat that terrorists will use Afghanistan as their base. And that will influence all of the other neighboring countries. The current instability is dangerous for the economic situations and presents many threats.
In modern world, the situation of Afghanistan can be degenerated into a direct threat to everybody and to its neighboring countries. So we're very much concerned about it. The reason for this is that Afghanistan doesn't follow or observe human rights always and to full extent. That's why we need to coordinate the policy to find solutions in this area. The leading countries, neighboring countries and other countries which take decisions on regional and global issues should take into account the interests of all the stakeholders, including the interests of the Afghan population. And this policy should encompass these approaches. As it hasn't happened, the Taliban comes to power and they, the Taliban... And they, the Taliban, creates additional difficulties and hardships in a unstable regional situation. The Taliban, the Talibs do not keep their promises to set up a government of broad coalition, and it's also an issue of great concern for us. Now they promote issues showing discrimination while establishing the government. And it's against, all their actions are against international law and undermine international organizations' efforts in providing peace and security in the region. It's all these extremist calls and torture are translated in the social networks. These are facts of life. So the system which is being imposed in Afghanistan does not correspond, is not in line, and is incompatible neither with either with the international law or with the Afghan law. They just stick to their own system of values and worldviews. And the Chief Commissioner, Michel Bechelin, gave a talk in the UN on the current situation in Afghanistan and said that the current situation in Afghanistan is really gives rise to much concern and fears. And the protest rallies confirm this idea, especially women's protest rallies and women's discrimination in Afghanistan. All this shows that the human rights, women's rights, and international law is being undermined. And before the Taliban's coming to power, the situation with women was much more stable in Afghanistan. They, for example, there were twenty-seven percent of women in parliament and five percent in the government. And Taliban promised to respect the rights of the women and their rights and especially their right to work and to education. But they do not keep their promises. They also promised to stick to the religious equality, which doesn't happen in real life. Mr. Lavrov said in his interview that the Talibs have not kept their promises. And as a result of the military actions and operations, more than eight million of people in Afghanistan need the essential goods. So this again shows that the Taliban has to follow the recommendations to form the government on an inclusive basis, involving the representatives of the broad coalition. And another important issue, Afghanistan is transforming into a haven of international terrorism. Brothers, Muslim brothers and other radical groups turned Afghanistan into their own haven. And now the Talibs are trying to to preserve the power and their legitimacy, and they do not recognize the rights of other people to their own rights and to their own government. And Afghanistan is really flooded with arms of various types. And nevertheless, if they fight against regular armed forces, they would be defeated. And in conclusion, I'd like to quote our president that we are supporters and advocates of universal peace, trying to settle any armed conflicts through peaceful means and through the process of negotiations. What we are concerned about today is the number of terror attacks, the torches and murders. Who will respond for all this? Who is responsible for this? And why do we recognize illegal radical groups that have taken the power in Afghanistan? How can it be that the international community recognizes Taliban while we do not recognize other radical groups? Why are we ready to negotiate with them? It's a disease that may go on. And for example, other radical groups, extremist groups, terrorist groups will follow the same way as Taliban did. So the international community, lawyers, international lawyers should not recognize it. We, the lawyers, we always try to find who is responsible. Do you, urio, de facto? What isn't found in diplomacy? Another point, the coalition. Forty-eight percent of the Afghan population are Tajiks, five percent Uzbeks. And they promised to create a coalition government, including various ethnic groups. And the community, the international community, will make the Talibs follow their promises, honor their promises. But up till present, we do not see any signs of honoring their promises. Now we have a direct threat from them to Tajikistan and to Kyrgyzstan and to Uzbekistan because all the former ISIS citizens, former Soviet citizens are ISIS members. And they are making their plans of taking the power in other neighboring states. So they used to be Soviet citizens, and now they are in the ISIS. And they are making plans to take power in other neighboring Central Asian countries. So I'd like to ask the media representatives to show the situation. Let me quote my philosopher from Tajikistan. Thank you for your attention. Thank you very much. Now. Now let's give floor.
Господин Суд, пожалуйста. И, пожалуйста, еще раз я напоминаю про регламент в 10 минут. Господин Суд, звук включите у себя на компьютере, да.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first of all thank the Director, Professor Torunov, for the very kind invitation. And also my best wishes for his speedy recovery from his ailment. I would have liked to be present in person, not least because of the importance of the seminar, but even more so so that I could see my friend face to face instead of virtually, Ambassador Kabulov, who is an old colleague and a very valued friend. I have been listening carefully to all the statements and the presentations that have been made. And I think there is a lot of merit in what we have heard. I will be very brief because I think a lot of substantive things have already been stated. First, I think that the US departure or the Western departure, because the Western staying was totally dependent on the US. So I would say the US departure was not a surprise. It had been on the cards at least since 2010, 11, or 2013, or 2018, when direct talks began, whichever date you want to put on it. But I think those of us who follow Afghanistan closely know that, we have known for at least 10 years that it was going to happen. So it was not a surprise. I think what is sad is that we were still caught unprepared for what happened. Because I think it was clear that once the US left, it would, in a sense, disengage. And it would be left to the countries of the region to be able to deal with the situation. That is exactly what is happening today. If I remember right, in last March, there was a meeting in Moscow of the extended troika, where there was a statement, a very significant statement that was issued, which said that we don't support a return to the Islamic Emirate, which said that there should not be the military option. Taliban should put more effort in the intra-Afghan dialogue, and there should be a stepping down of violence. As we have seen in the following months, none of these three things have been observed. Which therefore brings us to the current situation, and I will just make three very short points based on what we have heard. First, Ambassador Rahimi reminded us that in 2001, when the offer was made that the Taliban could surrender honorably and live in peace in their country. And that was spurned. And nobody at that time could persuade the Americans. Neither the United Nations nor the other major powers that look, how do we ignore the Taliban today? What will happen tomorrow? And in that sense, it was a mistake because the Taliban were ignored. It was the victor calling the shots, as it were. It is very important that we don't repeat the same mistakes of history. And I think that the Taliban, because they have come to power through the military route in a sense, they seem to think that they are victors. But if they make the same mistake that the Americans made 20 years ago, then I'm afraid peace in Afghanistan will remain a very, very distant goal. Second, I think the Taliban have tried during the course of these various processes that have been taking place, Art of Asia, Contact Group, Moscow, et cetera, all of these, Doha, that the Taliban have changed, that there is a Taliban 2.0. Now unfortunately, the evidence of that is still not convincing. However, one thing that has changed, and on that there is absolutely conclusive evidence, is Afghanistan itself in the last 20 years. And all of us who have been there 20 years have seen how it has changed. We were told 27% women in parliament, I think the number is 71 legislators. There are women judges, women lawyers, women in media, women in their army, air force, et cetera, et cetera. In addition, it is also a question of the way they look at their future, or they have been looking at their future. After all, if the median age in Afghanistan is 18 and a half years, that means 50% of the population has grown up in an environment, in a society, which may be certainly conservative, but at least is an open society. Now you cannot turn this clock back. So I think the Taliban have to deliver on the fact that they are different from the Taliban that the world saw during the 1990s. The third thing I would like to suggest is that I think it is, as has been said by more than one speaker before me, that we will see very limited engagement from the West, from the US. Maybe some humanitarian assistance, maybe some other things. But largely, I think the solution will have to come from the region. So therefore, I think the initiative that Russia is taking for convening a meeting on, I think it is 20th of this month, if I remember right. And with the representation of the countries of the region, I think this is the way to move forward. And this is where we need to find, and we need to find a collective voice. Taking from the statement that the extended troika issued in March that I referred to, using that as a platform, taking into account today's ground reality and using the collective voice of the countries of the region to persuade the Taliban to actually demonstrate a Taliban 2.0 and live up to the commitment that they made as our colleagues from Tajikistan, Uzbekistan, and Russia have already told us. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Спасибо большое. Thank you very much for your speech. The regional block will continue with the Senior Research Fellow of the Islamabad University. And when Mr. Sood was the ambassador to Afghanistan, our next speaker, Asif Durani, was Deputy Ambassador in Kabul. Mr. Durani, the floor is yours. Please turn on your microphone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ivan, thank you. Mr. Khilula, Gorgozawa Kuzim, Director Torunov, His Excellency Ambassador Zamer Kabulov, and Ambassador Rakhman Rahimi. It is an absolute pleasure to speak amongst the galaxy of scholars and policymakers on an issue that has impacted our lives for over four decades, especially the past two decades. The theme of today's discussion is relevant and concerns each of us in the region. Not only Central Asia, but Iran, Pakistan, and China have been seriously impacted. Over 241,000 advance of children's American invasion of Afghanistan. In Pakistan, we lost 80,000 people. The distinguished speakers who came before me have touched upon almost all facets of Afghanistan with cautious optimism. And I say cautious optimism because there are a host of uncertainties looming large on the Afghan horizon. Ambassador Kabulov has very ably articulated those issues. Ambassador Kabulov has very ably articulated those issues. There are legitimate apprehensions upon the Taliban system and other terrorist groups becoming more aggressive to take advantage of the fluid situation in the country. The apprehensions of a civil war and flux of refugees and smuggling of narcotics are genuine concerns for the immediate neighbors of Afghanistan and beyond. Indeed, the immediate neighbors of Afghanistan have significant stakes in the peace and stability of Afghanistan for they have been directly affected by the events in Afghanistan. The geographical location of Afghanistan is such that Pakistan's national poet, Alameh Iqbal, described Afghanistan as the heart of Asia. Whether in the geopolitical or geo-economic realm, it is Afghanistan's geography that matters. From the regional perspective, Afghanistan is a member of the SARC and ECO. It is also an observer of the Shanghai Cooperation Organization. Needless to say that Afghanistan's peace is of paramount importance for the regional countries. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, the change in Afghanistan while abrupt has been on expected lines. The Taliban's victory calls for a detailed study of how a ragtag militia forced a superpower to the negotiating table and successfully concluded an agreement to withdraw an occupation force. It also serves as a lesson that a parachuted system in the name of democracy proved to have a limited shelf life. We all saw how a popularly elected leader fled the people and how a well-equipped army melted down without much resistance. The media commentaries hold corruption as a significant factor of the previous Afghan government's fall. Suddenly, new disclosures about bad governance, nepotism, narco-business and warlords sway over the country have gained momentum in the blame game. I don't think that the Taliban came to power through a miracle. It was not a miracle unless resistance has roots amongst the masses that cannot succeed. It is now being acknowledged that Taliban lived amongst the people and fought for the people. For an ultra-conservative society with a resistance history against foreign invasion, the Taliban succeeded in selling their narrative to the tribes in the country. Ambassador Kabulov alluded this fact in his statement very early. The reemergence of Taliban also reinforces the argument that a grassroots movement for freedom cannot be defeated, not even by a superpower. The Taliban victory poses a challenge to the practitioners of international politics. An entity declared as terrorist under UN Security Council Resolutions twelve sixty seven and nineteen eighty eight entered the scene as an interlocutor with the US and obtained the unconditional withdrawal of American troops from Afghanistan. Strangely, for the past ten years, the Taliban are declared terrorist group, maintain an address in Doha. Usually terrorists do not hold a mailing address. The American withdrawal should serve as a lesson to the occupation forces wherever they are. And the lesson is that it is futile to fight against the will of the people. Certainly, occupation cannot go on forever. Prudence demands that the resolution of disputes through peaceful means. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, this forum is a perfect setting to look into the challenges that the new situation in Afghanistan poses to the immediate neighbors of Afghanistan and its likely impact at the global level. A confrontationist approach should not help solve the problems. It is encouraging to note that based on the Shambis summit understanding, the immediate neighbors of Afghanistan have awarded a regional approach towards the new regime in Kabul. The immediate neighbors of Afghanistan agreed that they would take a collective decision to recognize the Taliban regime. They agree that the Taliban regime will ensure that the terrorists do not use Afghan soil against any country. The Taliban should establish an inclusive dispensation with adequate representation to the religious and ethnic minorities. The regional governments also agree that women cannot be ignored from the national life. They should have adequate representation in the decision made. Secondly, there is a consensus about the delivery of humanitarian assistance to Afghanistan. Holiday winter has set in in the northern parts of Afghanistan and it is only a matter of days when the entire country would be in the grip of severely cold weather. Apart from food deliveries, the people need urgent medical attention, especially the administration of COVID vaccines to urban and rural populations. Thirdly, the US has frozen Afghanistan's funds worth nine point five billion dollars. Mr. Alexander Sternek has very eloquently spoken about this problem. The Taliban regime cannot pay for the salaries of the government servants. Two thirds of those servants are teachers and health workers, including women. If we expect the Taliban to honor human rights, especially women's rights, then there is a need to adopt measures to make ordinary citizens' lives easy. Fourthly, a peaceful and stable Afghanistan is a guarantee for regional peace and security and economic development. A peaceful Afghanistan can contribute to regional connectivity, especially for the Central Asian states. In terms of regional connectivity, Pakistan is resetting its priorities and focusing on geo-economics. Apart from the China-Pakistan Economic Corridor with over sixty billion dollar Chinese investment, Pakistan will also be a part of Belt and Road Initiative, which offers abundant situation for the Central and South Asian states. Lastly, with the involvement of relevant stakeholders, a regional initiative for Afghanistan's peace and prosperity can yield positive results. Such an initiative can steer the region to boundless cooperation and lay a sound for a solid foundation for peace, cooperation and comfort. I thank you for your attention.
Spacy, what I should.
Thank you, Mr. Durani. Uh, and now give the floor to the former ambassador of the Islamic Republic of Iran to Moscow, Mr. Sanai. He is now the center director of the Institute for Iran Eurasia Studies. Mehdi, please turn on your camera and your microphone and the floor is yours. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I've turned on my microphone, but unfortunately I cannot turn on my camera. I will try to settle this problem. Maybe we can connect you. You may begin. You may begin and we'll try to fix the problem with the camera. All right. Well, first of all, thank you very much for having me here. I cannot hear the speaker. No sound. We can't hear you right now, Mehdi. Mehdi, how about we'll try to settle this technical problem. And while we're doing this, we'll give the floor to our next speaker from China, our friend and partner, who is the Vice President of the Chinese Academy for International Problems. And this is our old partner and friend and we have many projects together. Mr. Jun, are you ready to take the floor? Can you turn on your camera microphone?
Okay. Thank you very much. The it's indeed and a great honor and privilege to be invited and to speak at such a distinguished forum. And I think I've listened very carefully and learned so much by the previous speakers' insights. And within the very limited time, I would like to share three brief points about the topic. First, first, I think the war in Afghanistan, as we have discussed, is more or less has come to conclusion, has ended. But the 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 challenges, the problems that have been left over, in particular by the United States and the West, the military intervention and diplomatic sort of promotion are really visible and indeed becomes the the sources to some extent of the major problems we are facing. And the the answer or the the solution to this problem, as we have all discussed, is of course a new Afghanistan that is inclusive politically and committed to the counterterrorism in the in the in the security field and and pursue a good enabling really relationship with all its neighbors and and of course, an international with international community diplomatically. But how to achieve that is something I think certainly not an easy job, as we have discussed. I think this lead to my second point. Obviously, we all there is a kind of consensus. It would take the regional countries, international community and Afghanistan to work together. But the the responsibilities of United States and the West, which created the problem, I should also, I think they are saying, in other words, we should ensure the United States and the and the West would continue to show that they are necessary responsibility by working together with the regional countries and Afghanistan to build favorable conditions for Afghanistan's reconstruction and development. And I understand, of course, there are different views, a different sort of approaches and and there are different concerns that need to be addressed. The for me, I think the addressing these sort of concerns or finding these consensus, maintain this consensus would be not easy, but we can do in a in a in a way that by addressing or by working together to addressing the most immediate sort of challenges facing Afghanistan and some of the issues where I I think which would help Afghanistan to achieve the long-lasting sort of peace and stability that had been elusive for so many decades. Of course, here, the humanitarian sort of issues, assistance issues comes into play. Again, I understand through the previous spoke presentation and others, I understand there are some differences, there are some concerns and there are some different difficulties in terms of the economic unilateral economic sanctions, the frozen the frozen of the assets by the US and others. But I think if we can agree upon, this is the most important thing and more importantly, we can we can start on working on some practical and practical and pragmatical ways to address the need, the deliver of need, international of humanitarian, this is something I can be a good start. And more importantly, I think we need to develop a holistic and integrated approach for Afghanistan's peace and reconciliation development. And we have, we talked quite a lot about the lessons and experiences that we have had. I think the one of the for me, the one of the most important lessons or experience for Afghanistan is it would have to bring it more integrated or to be part of the regional integration and the development, which I think over the past three decades have seen unprecedented transformation and development. But again, there are to do that, it would call upon many a kind of a better coordination and complementation of various regional organizations or regional integrated initiative to so that and and to work together under the sort of framework and of the UN, which will always, which should have continued to play a leading role. And this is, I think, for me, is more sort of important and even though I think a long-term solution. Last but not least, I think China, as a close neighbor of Afghanistan, has worked very hard to help Afghanistan to achieve smooth transition, soft landing in the wake of the August fifteenth, the development of the fifteen and over the and in light of the urgent need.
Professor Jun, can you hear us? Because there is a disconnection. Yes, of course, these are just problems with online communication. Mehdi, are you here with us? Are you connected? So maybe we'll now listen to our Iranian friend. Mehdi, are you here? Yes, you are here. Great. So you you see, we have to choose either China or Mehdi. There is one cable. So Sanai, Mr. Sanai, we can hear you. Let's listen to your presentation. Mr. Sanai, can you hear us? Okay, then we'll give the floor to Andrei Kazanov, senior researcher of the Institute for International Studies. Andrei, so we are we don't stick to the schedule. Could you be more brief and specific while we'll try to get connection with our Chinese and Iranian friends? Dear friends, thank you for the chance to talk here. I have just a few minutes. And we are lagging behind and moreover, I can't give advice to brilliant practitioners present here. So while we have a pause, I'd like to say the following. First of all, I'd like to address our students and mass media journalists, including international mass media. Lately, the influence of Russia is growing in Afghanistan region and due because of the US troops withdrawal and other events. So the Russian and international mass media pay special attention to the Russian policy in this region. While while I talked with the journalists, both Russian and international, I think that the direct translation in YouTube gives a good chance for journalism. gives a good chance for journalists to be present at this event and it's a very good chance to understand the systemic approach of Russia in its policy. Because as shows my personal experience, those who wrote about Afghanistan in the context of the Russian policy, either they focused on one of the areas of its policy related to Afghanistan or on Central Asian issues or on international regional aspects of the problems related to East Asia or Southeast Asia, the Middle East, etc. And they could not see any profound, in-depth connections of all these areas. As I was one of the consultants of the program, I believe that what we've shown in this open format is just a very good illustration of Russia's comprehensive approach to its policy in Afghanistan. Let me be brief and I'll give you my general take on the situation in Afghanistan. I hope that our foreign colleagues will get connected. So the first area and the respected ambassador and other speakers stressed it. So the main area is to support the moderate forces in Afghanistan to come into contact with them, to develop contacts with them. And they will enable us to exert positive influence on the situation in Afghanistan. The second aspect that was also described by the ambassador Sternik, he talked about the Russian policy in Central Asia. And sometimes, the mass media press shows a lack of understanding. And I'm a specialist in the region. And I quite agree with Mr. Sternik that the basic, the key problem for Russia is to provide our own security and the security of the Central Asian countries. And there is an in-depth connection in this area. It means that the development of assistance, defense, fight against extremism, terrorism, and it's all is compatible with the positive trends in Afghanistan. These are two closely related areas. The third area, which also has been discussed in our discussion, Afghanistan is the heart of Asia, is the hub or nod of international problems, which reflects very difficult relations between Iran and a number of Sunni Muslim states, India and Pakistan and India and China, etc., and also the relation between or among many ethnic groups. And I think that there was a very good review on all the complicated aspects of problems or good chances for the conflict resolution in Afghanistan. Also, I'd like to add that much can be done to neutralize, to mitigate threats from Afghanistan. And it's related not only to in line of security, providing security or in military cooperation, but also it's related to some positive processes in Afghanistan, for example, economic reforms. And Pakistani experience can well illustrate this. To another point, to neutralize conflicts, to settle conflicts in the neighboring Central Asian countries. And many contradictions have been solved recently, thanks to this policy. And there are many other interesting areas, for example, reforms, fight against corruption, administrative reform, fights against corruption. And there is a very serious threat, and I'd like to stress it. There is a negative scenario that should be avoided and we should talk about them, to understand them better and to understand how we can fight against the development of situation or to prevent the developing, the situation development along these lines when internal contradictions inside the country will lead to confrontation of international players and this conflict will get expanded. And unfortunately, Pakistan can turn into this flashpoint. And I think that the international community and Afghani members are wise enough to try to avoid this scenario. Thank you very much. Thank you, Andrei. So I'd ask to ask Professor Junin, be very brief, because we are lagging behind our time limits. So Professor Junin, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I apologize really for the problem, for the disruption. Actually, my presentation has almost come to the conclusion, just to add one more sentence. I think what happened in Afghanistan and the challenges we are facing is, can be a kind of opportunity for the region as a whole if we work together in concert and with imagination and creativity and more importantly, I think, with a kind of sense of solidarity. And as the United States is becoming more disengaged and shifting its focus somewhere else, and it is up to the region as a whole and to take the lead, to make a difference, to ensure what happened in Afghanistan and afterwards will become an opportunity rather than another crisis that would help the region as a whole to, for a successful transformation, bringing peace and stability and development to the countries as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mehdi, are you here with us? Can you hear? Could you switch on the mic and the camera? Unfortunately, I didn't manage to switch on the camera, but the most important thing that I can see you. So once again, thank you for the invitation, for being here. I'd like to discuss a situation in Afghanistan and in terms of the international relations and in terms of the regional situation and in terms of the Iranian position. I'd like to draw your attention to the following. The economic situation in Afghanistan is really very bad. They are short of funds of money because the bank accounts have been frozen by the international community. Payments of salaries have been stopped. No wages. And more than 2 million women and children are starving. Unfortunately, the economic and social situation in Afghanistan is really very bad and is deteriorating. So we all have huge responsibility for improving this situation and for providing humanitarian aid to Afghanistan. In terms of theory and in terms of international relations, what has happened in Afghanistan is a very grave defeat of the theory of export of democracy and freedom. We were witnessing for more than two decades or have been witnessing for more than two decades in various parts of the world, which was imposed by the United States through various kinds of colorful colored revolutions, through interference. So Afghanistan is the peak of this attitude and the withdrawal of US troops is a clear-cut defeat of this theory. Another defeat is related to the construction, building of a statehood in other countries and lands. And we've just confirmed once again that interference in the domestic affairs of other states is an absolutely wrong attitude and it cannot improve the situation in other countries. And in terms of the theory, we can look into the situations at its following aspect. It's one of the cases where we can, which can be discussed in ethnic contexts and in political contexts of Islam. What has come to power is a peak of political Islam, which is quite different from other Islam persuasions. It differs practically from Sunni Cheats groups and other political institutes we know very well, which are the basis for political Islam. Here, we also have ethnic, we witness ethnic grounds or basis of this movement and we can discuss it as well. What else can we see? Lack of a sort of chaos in the relations of international community when the international community and the United States resort to the military force. And a lack of action of international organizations that should save people. People are afraid, but nothing is done, is being done. And the Security Council members have absolutely different opinions on all main topics of the international policy. It's also a topic that could be discussed and we can think how to address this problem. As far as the regions are concerned, we should be concerned about deterioration of ethnic roles. And of course, the responsibility is not only with the Afghan, new Afghan authorities, but also with all of us. We have to fight against even possibility of radicalization. Have to remove this possibility. As the new developments in Afghanistan influence the whole regional policy. And the trust towards West is falling and the regional cooperation is becoming more important in this regard. And so these Afghan events may be linked to the events in South, developments in South Caucasus. We have to cooperate to prevent the development of the situation along the lines of this scenario, of the Afghan scenario. I represent Iran and we have 900 kilometers borders of borders with Afghanistan. We have Afghan refugees in the country. And we provide assistance. And our trade turnover was $3 billion in 2020. And now we try to preserve these economic relations with Afghanistan and the economic interaction and trade interaction. So as we have open borders for economic cooperation, it's trade, it's mainly trade, so we need to somehow interact with the new authorities in Afghanistan. Also, we draw attention to the meetings or summits of the six countries, of the six countries in the region, countries neighboring with Afghanistan. So and the Russian Federation is also invited to take part in this new meeting, which will take place in October. And I hope that Russia will take part in it. And what else to add? We need to separate the issue of recognition of the new authorities with or between the humanitarian aid. Because otherwise, the social and economic situation will deteriorate drastically and it will lead to an economic catastrophe. So the responsibility should be assumed by the neighboring countries to persuade their international colleagues and partners that the participation in ethnic groups and the creation of the state doesn't mean that everybody recognizes Taliban is just for creating stability or for maintaining stability in Afghanistan. Iran itself has assumed responsibility and provided humanitarian aid to Afghanistan. So we continue humanitarian aid to Afghanistan. And on the 27th of October, at the conference in Tehran, hosted by Tehran, which will be attended by the neighboring countries, will produce tangible results and we will able somehow to alleviate the situation. But of course, we cannot expect much from the West. They have already shown that the regional associations, regional group of states are becoming more and more important. Thank you very much for the invitation, for the chance given me to make a presentation here. Mr. Ambassador, thank you very much. Unfortunately, we're lagging behind and we Of cour- unfortunately, we're lagging behind and we have not stuck to our uh time limits. So I'd like to thank our participants, Mr. Ambassador Brahimi, our ambassadors from Pakistan, India, Iran and China. Thank you very much for your contribution. So we've we are concluding our work and will start uh will start resume our work at sixteen at four uh PM. And we'll have a discussion in a closed format. Thank you for your participation.